Okay, I'm going to calling to order the town council meeting of July 15th, 2024. And I'm going to begin by asking Consulperson Tompkins to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, we're going to lead off tonight's meeting with a very unique presentation where we are going to thank and honor two individuals who have served the town of Plainville and wish them well as they move on to the next chapter in their lives. And I'm going to turn this over right now to our Chief Bagley.
Good evening, Town Council. Thank you very much for having me speak here today. Indeed, it's a very unique situation. I must admit, this is the first time in my 31-year career that I've had this type of ceremony that we're going to do right now. As you may or may not know, we have two of our officers leaving. As we discussed, they're both mammals, but one is human and one is not. And so, as you know, Officer Martosi has been with us for eight and a half years, and I'd be remiss if I first didn't thank him for his service. When I first met him, I was very excited to have an officer like him on the force. He looked like he could run through walls and ran through a little bit too many walls. And he's going to be leaving us, and I know that he's going to be taking with him to his next opportunity, the skills that he has, which are, of course, public service and his investigative talents. So I wanted to thank him personally for that. I have a little bit more to say about the dog, actually. Met Riggs, too. I've been around law enforcement for a long time. I've seen a lot of canines. Riggs, without doubt, is probably one of the best dogs in the state of Connecticut. Riggs has been with us for five years. And of course, as you know, it's a team. It's a handler and a dog. They work as one, a very unique addition to our department and a unique skill set as well. Over that five years, of course, Riggs has logged just as many hours as his handler. Riggs has done hundreds of deployments, found well over 100 drug seizures, as well as successfully tracking missing persons, endangered persons, fleeing criminals, suspects, evidence recovery. And it wasn't just an asset for us as well. Riggs was well-known throughout this entire area and in fact was used by many other departments besides us, as well as our federal partners in the DEA, postal service, and others, because Riggs had a great reputation. So it's a little sad, bittersweet to say goodbye to both of these awesome officers, but one of the things that we do in law enforcement, when the officer retires or a dog retires, is we allow that officer to adopt the dog. Obviously, that dog has been with the Martosi family since it was a pup. It's part of their family. It's a working dog, but it lives on them just like any other pet. And of course, so what we have here is, I have a very simple piece of paper, which really is a receipt. So he's going to be buying the dog for $1. I think you're getting a deal on that one, to be quite honest with you. And so, Mark, if I could have you come on up to the podium. In front of the town attorney, I will not put that in my pocket. I'm putting it right over here. And if I could just have you sign? Another mouth to feed, again, for a long time.
Yeah, that's okay. He's easy.
Thanks, Mark. Congratulations. Thank you, guys, very much. And give them a round of applause, please.
Okay, we'll wait a few moments if anybody wants to leave or would like to stay, of course, for the rest of the meeting. Okay, the next agenda item is public hearing. We do not have a public hearing at tonight's meeting, so we'll move right to Agenda Item Number Three, which is the minutes of the previous meeting. And is there a motion to approve those minutes?
Madam Chair?
Yes.
Motion to approve the minutes of June 17th, 2024, regular meeting.
Second.
Madam Chair, I'm just going to recuse myself from this vote, as I was not here.
Thank you. Is there any discussion? Okay, hearing none, I'll take the vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed?
Aye.
Pardon? So the motion passes, and the minutes for the June 17th meeting then are approved. Next agenda item is announcements and reports. And does anyone have an announcement or a report? No? Nope. Just very quickly, I will say that last Tuesday on July 9th, I attended a special meeting of the Conservation Commission, where they had a Zoom meeting with somebody on the staff of Sustainable Connecticut, which we recently have joined. And it was a very, very good session. The staff person really led them through a lot of the steps and a lot of the things that the commission can do to complete different action steps and earn points toward the different rankings that the group awards, different towns. So it was an interesting meeting, and they're going to be moving forward with that, of course. Appointments and resignations. First one on the agenda is the Conservation Commission appointment.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
Motion to ratify the town manager's appointment of Mark Van Julo, 87 North Hampton Lane, to the Conservation Commission for the term ending January 15th, 2026.
Thank you.
Second.
Second. Any discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries, and we have acknowledged or approved the town manager's appointment of Mr. Van Julo to the Conservation Commission. The next appointment is the Committee on Aging reappointments.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
Motion to reappoint Susan DeRocher and Brenda Tella to the Committee on Aging for the term ending August 1st, 2027.
Second.
Any discussion? Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The motion carries, and Sue and Brenda are officially reappointed. And those complete the appointments and resignations for this week. And Board of Education, Leah Stone, is there anyone here who's going to be giving that report? I guess not. So we'll move on to the report of the town attorney.
I don't really have reports up to top.
Okay. Well, thank you. Okay, and then, of course, we'll move on to the next agenda item, which is the report of the town manager. And Mr. Paulus is joining us via Zoom tonight.
Good evening. I hope you can hear me all right. Sorry, I could not be there with you in person, but we'll certainly hopefully be back in the office tomorrow. And I appreciate the opportunity to appear via Zoom. I have a couple of items under my report, beginning with the underground storage tanks. And I will say there were some questions, if you recall, from the last meeting, I think, from Mr. Kislik. I don't know if he's present, but I understand that Andy Cirelli had reached out to answer those questions. And the size of the tanks are a 5,000-gallon gas tank, a 5,000-gallon diesel tank. Both have to come out. And what we're looking to go to are 6,000 or 12,000 in total, split between six gas and six diesel. And they are a split capacity. They have double wall system for spill design, if you will, for future. These are the new tanks, and that's the design feature that we're going after. Obviously, these tanks are at their end of their life cycle that the State Department of DEEP has indicated to us. It's been on our radar, and now it's time to move. And we did, at a previous meeting, allocate, were sent to a public hearing to allocate $300,000 for the removal. But since then, with further research and analysis within the bid, a little bit of deficiency in a few areas of the bid when they got to review that. And I was also asking the superintendent for roadways for additional detail. Part of the reason the jump in the scope is stuff that we have not identified and missed with respect to who is doing what, and we thought we could use some of it. But the other factor that came out was there's an additional 1,000-gallon tank in front of the dog pound that's within, I'm told, about within four to five feet of the existing tanks. And it has roughly the same age as the other tanks. To the superintendent, the staff didn't make sense to leave that there and risk even in the operation of excavating, potentially hitting that, because it's really a sort of a guess as to, not really a guess, but it's not a pinpoint accuracy. So they'll dig and they'll get it out. And at this point, the revised bid now includes the third tank for the dog pound, which makes sense that they're going to be done all at the same time and not have to go back in a year from now, five years from now, for the third tank in front of the dog pound. So that is a reason suggesting that we go back to setting a public hearing for ARPA to close the gap on the funding, which is, as you see in my notes, the project will be a total new cost of $491,452. And that's a result of the second research and analysis done on a full comprehensive bid for the remediation. And also includes state requires sampling of closure. So fingers crossed, there's no rupture in the tank, but we still have to do soil remediation and testing to show to the state that there wasn't any leakage. But our problem is proximity to a landfill, and hopefully there isn't any other substances leaking into that testing area. So that's a part of what was picked up as well in terms of the bid. So there's an item under New Business to set a public hearing for Monday, August 19th, to consider ARPA funds to fully fund the purchase. And I'll pause there if there are any questions, or I can go through and pause at the end, Madam Chair, whatever you prefer.
Certainly.
I have a question.
We can ask questions right now. That's fine with me. Does anyone have any questions?
Madam Chair?
Yes.
The 1,000-gallon tank, is that being removed and replaced or just removed?
Removed and replaced.
What is, is it a diesel tank of?
Yeah, that one is a gas. That was a $1,000, a 1,000-gallon steel gas tank, I believe, gas.
Okay. And so we'll have two gas tanks and one diesel tank?
In the context of the added capacity.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Are there any other questions about the tanks at this point? Certainly at the end of the manager's report, if you think of something, you know, we can ask it then. Mike, ready for Top Long Pond?
Under item number two, I have is the discussion on Top Long Pond. This item was previously discussed at executive session. What additional information has come to light? As you recall, there's potential buyer for the Top Long Pond, associated property behind the West Cemetery off North Washington Street. The parcel is approximately 15 acres, with the pond itself roughly 10 and a half acres. There's no vehicular access to the area. The parcel is completely within the regulatory floodway, and back taxes are owed on the property. The new information comes from the town planner, which I can't see him, but I hope that he's in attendance with you tonight.
Hi, Mike.
He is.
Great. Thanks, Mark. Thank you for attending. Mark has certainly said some light on this and answer any questions that may come. But it was, you know, looked at, and when the impact is when the state goes through to put in the bike path, that it's really going to force this property to be landlocked. They're not going to allow any vehicles to cut across the path to gain access. So I felt it was just a nonstarter and sort of wouldn't be transparent if we were just trying to, you know, let it go through. I think it's in the best interest of the town to take pursuit of that. The state is not going to allow, we want to make the state look like the bad guy, if we allow the sale to go through. So I think it's in the best interest to have the town attorney and Mark and myself work together to come up with an exchange of the property for back taxes in lieu of allowing the private sale to go through. So that's where we are. And certainly, Mark is in the audience. We can pause there for any, you know, questions or concerns. I know, you know, last discussion, last go-around, you know, might be concerns about, you know, any contamination within in that. I have not walked the site, but again, Mark could probably speak to it better than I could. But the history would not suggest any illegal dumping that I'm aware of and that the record shows. And Mark can correct me if I'm wrong, but I think that could put one fear aside. I think it's a pretty good site, and I think we should, the town should control it. And I'll leave it at that and pause or yield for any questions.
Are there any questions for either Michael, Mark, or both? It does say at the end of your section on this topic that if there is consensus among the town council members, that you would suggest that you proceed to the process with the town attorney. Should we talk about that now and see if there is consensus? Yeah, okay. What are the feelings on that, everyone?
I'm all for it, as long as there's no contamination. I think that needs to be the first, there needs to be tested. You know, I don't want us to take it and then be stuck with a bill.
Good evening, Mark DeVoe, your town planner. So at this point in time, we really can't make any firm representations that there are no contaminants. We can, however, characterize what went on there and let you draw your own conclusions. The site or the pond was created via an excavation of sand and gravel for either the construction of Route 72 or Northwest Drive, one or the other, I'm not sure. I believe it was Northwest Drive.
Either two.
Yes. So it goes back quite a ways. The material was hauled out on the very road that will no longer be there once the trail is constructed. I would characterize the possibility of there being any contamination there. The possibility would involve or include potentially a hydraulic leak on the excavator that was removing the material from the site, perhaps a little oil leakage from the dump trucks that were running up and down the road to the construction site. I think at this point, it's important to note that any site examination or site investigation would be cost prohibitive, because we're not only talking about taking samples, soil samples, we're talking about taking aquatic soil samples and perhaps sending divers in and so on, so forth. So while I think it's highly unlikely that there's any level of contamination that the town should be concerned about, I can't guarantee that that's the case.
Thank you.
Okay.
Okay, other comments, questions, discussion? Okay, in terms of consensus, should we move the process forward? Nod or say something?
I don't know.
There seems to be some hesitation. Maybe we should, yeah, yeah.
I think I'm okay to move forward.
I am, too.
Dave and?
I don't see if there's any hurry to move forward.
Okay.
I think we can move forward next month, maybe, or a month after.
Deb?
Yeah, I agree with Dave.
Okay.
And Dan? I think the consensus is we'd like to wait at least another month and perhaps formulate some more questions, you know. And Mark, certainly anything you can think of to, in terms of the possible contamination, or is any other information you can dig up or think of? Same to you, Michael, that would be helpful.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
Michael, we received a grant for pollution of the property that the man affords a purchase in at this point. Is there any more grant money that would take care of that if it was polluted?
Well, yeah, I believe, you know, future rounds of funding could, I mean, I think the state is perpetually looking at cleaning up property. If the town were to take it, certainly we have a better opportunity to seek funding, like as we did with Whiteover or any other property that we may have that's contaminated, versus a, you know, private landowner that would probably seek the town's help to get it cleaned up anyway. So we can explore that for sure. And I understand that gathering more information, we'll just circle this as an August, you know, return this back with further, you know, information, whatever we can find. But I'd be happy to check with the state as well to see what type of, when the timing of the next round, and it may just be an open round. I'm not too familiar with it, but we can look into that.
I would venture to say, though, in terms of the sale, we probably have consensus that the property should not be sold.
I agree.
Okay, correct on that. Just to, I know maybe I'm stating the obvious, but just to, you know, we're not looking at that as an option. Yeah. Okay, then I think we're ready to move on to your next topic, Michael.
Great, thank you. Item three is just an update on our branding and marketing community survey. You know, this is something we've been working on and launched the survey. It is still open and will remain open until July 31st. This is a very simple, straightforward survey. We're just trying to, you know, bump up the participation and awareness that it's out there. It's real easy to take. We're looking for the input community-wise. We're looking to, you know, to come up with a tagline and logo and looking for community inputs. So the survey responses thus far have been pretty good. We received 227 online submissions and probably another 20 or so paper copies that have obviously been distributed throughout various areas within the community. And we'll continue over the next few weeks to promote the survey. And if anyone needs a flyer or a business card or QR code linking that, we can certainly get you supplies of that. Just want to have the best and most robust response that we can get. So this is just another opportunity to plug that. If someone had not heard of it and might be listening or watching, they would be able to find that information on our website. So I don't know if there are any questions there.
No, I don't think so. Nope.
Okay. If I move on to item four is the wastewater facilities plan. The town issued RFQ 2025-01 for professional engineering services for the preparation of wastewater facilities plan. The RFQ closed on June 27th, 2024. There were three firms represented at the non-mandatory site visit. That was Tig and Bond, Wright-Pierce, and H2M. And after performing the site visit, only Tig and Bond responded with a proposal. So at this point, the recommendation is to continue to negotiate with them a scope and fee with Tig and Bond, and then come back to the council for award once the fee has been determined. And I think the council is aware that Tig and Bond is a very reputable firm. We do lots of business with in the past and currently on other private items. I'm not sure why Wright-Pierce and H2M declined to submit a proposal, but the superintendent wastewater was in contact with the state. We reviewed the process in terms of our notification, our advertising, the fact that we have, you know, three interested parties and so forth. So the state has signed off for us to proceed with Tig and Bond, and that's my recommendation that we do and then bring that back to the council after those negotiations are complete. I'll pause there for any questions.
Are there any questions for Michael on the wastewater?
No, I'll just say for the, really more for the sake of public information, just to remind people, if you go back to our June 3 meeting, we had a more detailed discussion of this. And the reason we're looking for a plan is because our flow is exceeding the amount that the system was designed for and also the amount that we're permitted for. And so DEEP has instructed us to do a plan to address that. So that's why we're discussing this.
Very good. Thank you, Madam Chair. No other questions? I'll move on or comments?
Yes. Please move on.
Item five is police department vehicles. So we're entered into the new fiscal year, and the police chief would like to proceed with that purchase. One is a patrol vehicle, 2024 Ford Police Interceptor utility with the 2024 model year standard equipment for $42,885. The other is an administrative vehicle, a new 2025 Ford Explorer ST line utility with a 25 package standard equipment, $45,763. So there's an item under New Business to award bid 2025-05 police department vehicles under state contract number 19PSX0161 to Genbus Ford Plainville, Connecticut, for a total of $88,648, $42,885 for the patrol vehicle, and $45,763 for the administrative vehicle. Applause for any question. I know, I know, I can't see the chief, but maybe he stayed.
He did. He's here.
Great. Any questions?
Okay. Okay, I think we're all set, Michael.
Okay. All right. Great. That is pretty standard procedure in terms of getting the fleet up to snuff. So thank you. Item six, recent storm tree cleanup. That is an item I wanted to brief the council on, to give you an update on the condition of the trees at Norton Park with the recent storm activity. And you probably saw on social media or saw the pictures. And certainly, I hope the packet is helpful and complete in looking at what happened there, where trees had come down, you know, taking out fences and, you know, other property damage there. It's significant. When the superintendent looks at it from a liability standpoint, there are some issues there. Unfortunately, the trees may look great, but they're hollow and dead inside, and the root system is gone in most cases with the area that you see that's entirely paved over. So the superintendent and I, both superintendents, both roadways and building and grounds have come together to discuss this. And there's general consensus that we have a high liability, potential liability, and that they are working to put together a plan, a sort of triage, if you will, identifying how many, which is more than a dozen, I believe, at this point, and identifying the half a dozen or so most dangerous trees and putting a plan together to take those down before they fall down and cause damage or loss of life. And the last thing we want to do. So I think we had some near misses, and we're, you know, knock on wood fortunate that they were only fences and not anything serious, but could have been. They were close to pools and, you know, families could be out there in the pool in their yard and so forth. So this is just one of those things that unfortunately, you know, it's going to cost us money. And unfortunately, I'm not sure the public is, it'd be happy with that. But these are, you know, beautiful majestic trees, I think, that look very nice. And it's terrible when you have to take trees down in a park. But I think the liability outweighs the beauty. And we'll always, you know, look at a plan of planting more, for sure. But I wanted to bring this to your attention, that we're going to be working on this and that, you know, sooner rather than later. that, you know, sooner rather than later, it'll be a decision to take these trees down. So I wanted the council to be aware of that because the public will, I'm sure, react, and we want to put out as much information as we can as to the severity and the danger of these trees. So I'll pause there. I think it pretty much covers everything. I think hopefully the photos are, tell the story as well.
Any questions or comments? I think we're all set.
Okay, yeah. You know, I don't have a figure in front of me, but, you know, it's not an insignificant loss to take down trees of this size. So we're, you know, obviously, there's a certain limitation in terms of what our crews can do, so likely these are a professional tree service company that will come. And obviously, we've got some great, you know, local ones that we do work with and have a great relationship with, and will consult and bring them in to help us in the process and identify a budget to take care of these dangerous trees.
Okay, everyone? Okay, Michael?
Okay. And then next is the letter, the audit letter, if you will, from sort of an annual thing that we do, that we need confirmation, well, just not confirmation, we just need to highlight that in the minutes that have brought this letter to your attention, that it isn't something annual we do as part of the audit process, that we can reflect in the minutes and show that. And I think it's one of those things we do every year, but it's again, that time of year and same firm. So we've, I think, we are pushing, obviously, to get the process done a little bit quicker this year, but I'll answer any questions you may have.
Any questions about the lengthy letter from the auditor that we had in our packet?
With the, I will add, I think the chair, as the chair, he's absent this evening, but can expect a call as part of this process. That's a standard interview question. I believe that he gets contacted, the chair, he or she, whoever it may be at the time, gets contacted to answer some questions as part of that process. So I think Christopher is firmly aware of that, and I'm just throwing that out as well as part of that process. And they may ask any other members of the council as well, but I think it's limited to the chair.
Thank you. Thank you for that information. Now, before we move on to happenings...
I did have a comment on the letter from the auditors.
Oh, yes, please, yes.
And so we reviewed that, and all it does is describe to the council the process they're going to go through in performing the audit. We had already prepared a report indicating our opinion that they needed, so that's all that, that's in there. It does not have their conclusions or anything like that. It describes the process. Just wanted to go for your information.
No, thank you. That was, that's helpful.
All right, thank you.
Before we move on to happenings, which Cindy will be doing, once again, I'll ask if there's any questions or comments on any item that was included in the manager's report?
No questions.
No question? If not, Cindy, happenings, please.
Sure. I'll be taking over happenings for Andy this evening. The state of Connecticut made available emergency management grant funding to local municipalities, and Fire Marshal Ron Diver was happy to announce. The town of Plainville was one of 35 towns selected for a $25,000 grant to update and upgrade our emergency operations center. There will be a Republican primary held on Tuesday, August 13th. Polling locations will be open 6:00 AM to 8:00 PM. Absentee ballots will become available Tuesday, July 23rd. Early voting will be available August 5th through August 11th. Any questions pertaining to absentee ballots, you can contact the town clerk's office at 860-793-0221, extension 8751. Any questions pertaining to early voting, you can contact Register Our Voters office at 860-793-0221, extension 8761. Now onto the senior center. To register for any free programs, please call the senior center at 860-747-5728. A visit from the Hungerford Nature Center, Tuesday, July 16th at 2:00 PM. The Hungerford Nature Center will be visiting the Plainville Senior Center to learn about and experience live animals, including chickens, ferrets, and chinchillas, et cetera. Memory Cafe at the Senior Center, Thursday, July 18th at 2:00 PM. The Memory Cafe is a warm and welcoming program for individuals with memory loss. Any experiencing memory loss are welcome to attend with their loved ones or caregivers. Veteran's Social Hour, Tuesday, July 23rd at 10:00 AM, conducted by Sherri Vought, Veterans' Liaison for Hartford Healthcare Senior Services. For all veterans 60, over 60, and their spouses, skin cancer screening. Tuesday, July 23rd, 10:00 AM to 11:00 AM. An appointment is needed, please contact the senior center. Georgia Sturpka APRN will conduct a free skin cancer screening. Boost Your Brain Health, Wednesday, July 24th, 1:30 PM. How Eating a Diet Rich and Healthy Foods Can Benefit People at Any and Every Age. Olympic Day, Thursday, July 25th at 10:00 AM. Join us for some fun as we show our support for the 2024 Summer Olympics. Have fun playing cornhole, ladder ball, and a beanbag toss where you're red, white, and blue. That's all I have.
Okay, thank you very much, Cindy. And no questions or comments on happenings? Okay. Okay, so we will move on to public comment. This is for anyone who wishes to address the council. Please come to the podium and state your name and address, and we do have the three-minute limit, and there will be a little buzzer or bell ring when there are 30 seconds left, and then, of course, another one at the end of the three minutes. So would anyone like to address the council tonight? Okay, Mr. Kislik.
Good evening, town councilors. John Kislik, 65 Forestville Avenue. I have a couple things, put in my two cents. That Tofflon Pond, I was around when that was being dug, and I believe they used most of that gravel and sand to build the highway alongside my house. I went down there and they had huge pumps to keep the water level down from groundwater and probably the Pecobic River. So I don't think there's any pollution from when they dug down so deep, but that's just my opinion. That was all clean gravel. If anything, the river was more polluted than anything they dug out. Also want to thank Andy, our assistant town manager, for getting back to me with those questions. And I noticed the building committee hasn't met, they canceled their last two meetings. I'm going to be following them because I'm interested in what's going on there and want to have some ideas about ethics and different things, so I'm going to be following them. I don't know why they canceled, maybe they have no business now. And my last thing is Norton Park. I don't know if any of you have read the warranty deed, 1928, from Charles and Elizabeth Norton, but I wish you would. I'll read it in entirety, and then you'll see why I have my opinions that I have. Now, I understand you're going to go forward with Carnival Rides for Kids, and, you know, you're going to do what you do. The park was in two, there was two parcels of land. One of them, the main part, was like 59.6 acres, and what they're saying now, out of that, the park is like 16 acres. I'm not sure the exact amount, but they're saying that maybe that wasn't part of the original park plan, but there is a map. I haven't seen it, but it's in the deed, and it lays out the whole part of the park where the park was actually first proposed by the Norton. So I wish people would look at that. And I still, I still don't like what they're doing to our park. It was supposed to be more family and quiet, and to me, I feel the fire company had absolutely no right to have any kind of function there at that size. And like I said, read that deed and you'll see that all the functions that they banned besides carnivals were things with huge amount of attendance, and that's part of my reason. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, John. Is there anyone else who would like to address the council? Roberta?
There has been a lot of talk over the last several town council meetings regarding our charter and the contracts and the referendum that was voted down by the people. I've heard a lot of questions to this town council, but what I haven't heard is why people voted the way they did. I grew up in Plainville. I attended Plainville schools. I graduated here, and I went deeply in debt to come back here so that my son could have the same experiences I had in this town. As a result of this, I know many people in this town. I spent a great deal of time outside our voting district on Election Day, and I can tell you, talking with people outside, they did understand the question. People that did talk to me came with three themes. The first theme was the four-day work week. While, yes, people, the town does start a little bit earlier and end a little bit late, it is still not enough time for people like me that have to travel in and out of places like Hartford. Try spending some time on 84, see if you can get someplace fast during rush hour. Also, with this new setup, we lost an hour for Thursdays when we could do business. We're closing an hour earlier compared to when this setup was originally done. That's difficult for people like me, trying to maneuver if I have to do business in town. I basically have to take time off, and so do other people. The second theme that people talked about that I heard from folks is that regarding the historical egg collection that our residents lost. It was highly pushed and influenced by a town employee who does not pay taxes here or is a resident here. The third theme that people talked about has to do with the Aviation Commission. People did not understand why the previous town manager is a consultant for this group. To everyone's knowledge, he does not have a pilot's license, he does not have an hot air balloon license. Many people are aware of the previous manager's style of management and are questioning this arrangement. Those are the three things I heard from people. I'd like to also add that under, there was nothing in terms of I influenced the question. I never once said to folks, vote this row, vote that row, vote this, vote that. People came to me. I did not go to them and started talking about it because they know me, because I grew up here. They've known me, some of them have known me since I was five years old in this town. So they were very free and felt comfortable saying things. These people were Democrats, they were Republicans, they were independents, and they were new voters as well. Thank you.
Thank you, Roberta. Is there anyone else who would like to address the council this evening? No? Anyone else who would like to speak? Well, we will then close a public comment for the evening. The next item is old business, and I don't believe we have any old business. So we will move on to the next agenda item, which is new business, and there are three items under that. And can I have a motion on the first one?
Madam Chair?
Yes.
Motion to establish a public hearing on Monday, August 19th, 2024, at 7:00 PM in the municipal center to hear public comment regarding the use of coronavirus state and local fiscal recovery funds for an additional appropriation for underground storage tanks at the roadways department.
Second.
Okay, there's been a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Any discussion? Okay. If not, all those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Okay, the motion carries unanimously. The next item?
Madam Chair?
Yes.
I'd like to make a motion to award bid number 2025-05 Police Department Vehicles Under State Contract Number 19 PSX 0161 to Genghis Ford Plainville, Connecticut for a total amount of $88,648. $42,885 for a patrol vehicle and $45,763 for an administrative vehicle.
Second.
Okay, we've had a motion and a second. Is there any discussion on this motion? Any discussion? Okay, hearing none. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Okay, the motion carries unanimously. And the third item?
Madam Chair?
Yes.
Motion to approve the tax refunds as listed on the addendum.
There's been a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Any discussion? Okay, hearing none. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? The motion carries. Okay, the next agenda item is other discussions of interest, and I believe, Michael, you have one that you would like to add at this point?
Yes, I would. Thank you, Madam Chair. The comment is to the subject matter of the middle school of Plainville, and I think it would help for John Kislik's or tie into John Kislik's comment. There hasn't been a whole lot of business, that's why they haven't met, but we did issue an RFQ for architectural services, and that closes August 7th. So there certainly will be some business to handle in August or shortly, if not ready, then certainly September. But that is, would be the next order of business in terms of looking at those responses, which will be a complex part of the process because it is a big piece, obviously, getting the architectural services in place is a decision that they're, I'm sure, going to be very thorough about, but I just wanted to offer that as what's coming next.
Okay, well, thank you for that update. Does anyone else have any other topics for discussion?
I actually have a question, and it's regard to Mrs. Loria's comment about the previous town manager being a consultant for the Aviation Commission. Are we paying him for that?
Yes, Robert was retained to help with the lease negotiation with the committee to help with that process, and he was pretty much wrapped up and almost complete with a draft report that's coming.
Okay, so that will be ending soon?
Yes, I believe so, yeah. It will be ending, yes.
Okay, thank you.
I just haven't physically received the draft report, which I think will be final.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other topics for discussion? If not, is there a motion to adjourn?
Madam Chair?
Yes.
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? We are adjourned.